Officially calling this to order, it is recording. Thank you very much. What we'll start out with is the treasurer's report. So Rich, whenever you're ready, please.
Hey. We're about fifty-eight percent through the fiscal year. And we've spent about fifty-five percent of our operating expenses. And we've got about fifty-four percent of our budgeted operating revenue. So overall, the budget's pretty much right on track. Just to note, the one thing that's gonna be off of over our budget is our snow removal. In January, we actually finished up our budgeted allocation. So we're gonna have a probably a significant overage in that particular account. But everything else is pretty much on target. So just be aware that that's future bills on snow removal are coming.
Thank you.
The budget for the for the street plowing and for the sidewalk clearance?
Yes, that's it.
No, but what were the amounts that we?
We budgeted fifty thousand for it. And we spent as of January, we spent the full amount.
Of course, that's for streets. Yeah, we budgeted a hundred for sidewalks. We spent fifty, and then there'll be another bill from today's storm. So
Okay.
So we're over on streets and depending on what happens, we should be okay for sidewalks.
Yeah, I actually I overlooked that myself. I forgot the sidewalks.
Well, no, I knew the budget for sidewalks is actually greater than for streets.
Yeah, yeah.
There's more room there. So.
Yeah.
Rich, I have one other question about it. I if I can ask, I noticed that the the money, the payment we got in January, which is not one of the regular payments that we count on so heavily, but kind of
Right.
grab bag.
Right.
Was was a lot lower than previous years. Do you have any insight about that?
Yeah, Todd and I have talked about that. It really depends upon essentially late tax filers. So in each year, it can fluctuate tremendously. And so that it just fluctuates significantly over the years. And 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 we didn't, we haven't gotten anything. We should get another dispersment, I would think, this coming this coming month, but at least that's the explanation I've got is just.
I know it won't have any major effect on the overall year, but.
No, no, no.
I think it was always a true up, Rich. That's the way I understood it to be. And the state let us know a couple of years ago that, you know, they're starting to get a little bit better so that the January true up is not as big as it has been.
It continues. It continues as as the year, you know, as the tax season ends and people stop filing. It 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 tails off. They have gotten better, but but it doesn't really. And they give us a forecast, but it's 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 getting better. Their forecast is getting better, but we're still gonna see these these ups and downs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Rich? Comments? Dave, once again, the streets look great today, and the sidewalks were cleared rather quickly. So much appreciative for Dave and I were texting this morning quite early before the birds were even up. And and I appreciate that very much, getting on top of it. So thanks.
Kudos along to the crews.
Definitely, for sure, for sure.
By the way, going back to the sidewalk, the the sidewalk snow removal, we had budgeted, we're still within our budget, you know, we're more than fifty-five percent through the fiscal year. And we're at fifty, about fifty-four percent spent on our on our sidewalks. And so we had a hundred thousand. We've only spent fifty. So I don't I don't see us any any problem with that particular line item.
Here's here's hoping that was the last storm was yesterday. Good. Great. Any anything else? Any questions or comments for Rich? Okay, so we'll open it up for public comments. Aside from the public hearing that we're going to be having just just after this on an ordinance to amend the chapter four of our of our code, if there's anyone that would like to provide comments on any other aspect of the agenda, or perhaps other things that are on your your minds right now. This is the the time to do so. Would anyone like to make a public comment?
Hi, yes. Hi, I'm Drew Jallow. Good to see everyone here. I'd like to make a comment about the ZTA, the I guess the new affordable housing strategy. And this is the first meeting I'm going to, so I'm not sure if it's appropriate to give it a comment now or wait for that.
Oh, no, no, actually, yeah, this is the time for everyone to to provide comments when we enter into council discussions or other business updates. That's just really for the council to to make some determination. So yes, this is the exact time
Okay.
to go in. Can you just tell me your address, just for the record?
Yes, I'm at three nine oh six Aspen Street.
Oh, right. Oh, right near me. Okay, great. Go for it.
So well, thank you, everyone. So I just want to make a comment about the this, you know, it's a tangible housing strategy. I know there's been a pivot. But I just want to express my deep concern with with this new new initiative. I was at the, and I guess by way of background, so I previously worked in started my career in affordable housing. I now work for a large real estate investment firm. So I do have, you know, this is my kind of area expertise in terms of my day job. And I really want to go on record, you know, forcefully stating that this I strongly disagree with what is being proposed and just adding multifamily to the town, I think, would be would have a severe impact on the quality of life for everyone in town. And also, it seems like in a good, I could be wrong here, but I don't my impression is that we haven't done the traffic studies or the environmental studies or the civil engineering studies to really to study this because I, you know, in general, I do support affordable housing, but I think this is the wrong approach. I think there are much better ways to add to the affordable housing stock in the county, which I think we'd all agree would be a good thing. But this approach with the town, and I know they're they're gonna change the zoning code, but now just simply allowing for multifamily housing on Connecticut. Again, I'm three houses down from Connecticut. And then also on on East West, I think we had a really detrimental effect on the town and not affect the housing stock whatsoever. So I I strongly urge the town council, and again, if this is if this has already been done, or if this is in progress, then I apologize. But we I feel like strongly we need to conduct traffic studies to start a traffic study and a civil engineering study on the sewer. Because those are two things that have the biggest impact if we were to allow, you know, any any additional density on Connecticut and East West. So I don't know what the next steps are, but and I'd like to just point out that the listserv, which I think you guys are on, you know, it's overwhelmingly negative. I was at the January sixteenth meeting at the Heritage Library that was hosted by Councilman Freedson, and it was standard room only, by the way, and it was universally panned. So I think if, you know, I know some of the the language in the town crier and some other reports I've seen has been, you know, there've been a variety of of opinions, but I really do think that there's if you do the survey, the the town, the people in the town, I think you'd find that it's overwhelmingly negative. So I just want to make sure that we are taking corrective steps and and at least studying the effects of what this could bring to the town.
Okay, so Drew, since this is your area of expertise, you're you're more than welcome to provide us with some specific recommendations on how a ZTA like this could be made better. So I'm very happy to have a conversation with you one on one.
Okay.
You know, whatever. In addition, the Long Range Planning Committee, which is one of our five standing town committees, is also discussing this at length. So if you have not yet had an opportunity to attend one of those meetings, or me, I know that there's a person on the line now, Jay, who is a member of the committee, if you don't haven't already introduced yourselves to each other. Okay, good, good, good. So I encourage you as well to to be a part of those discussions. And you know, do you want to clarify that the discussion that occurred at the library, at the Chevy Chase Library, was still under the attainable housing
It was.
strategies and not this workforce housing ZTA. So I want to make sure that people understand that there was different reactions to different different CTAs. But I do appreciate your comments and and looking forward to connecting. Thanks. Thanks, Drew. Great.
Okay.
Any welcome. Anyone else? Jay, please.
Hello, I'm Jay Kelly. I live on Lynn Drive. I have been, as Irene mentioned, on the Long Range Planning Committee for a little over four years, working with Joy this year. I'm just wanted to pipe up to sort of urge the council to formally have the Long Range Planning Committee start analyzing some of these issues. So yes, while we've been discussing it at length over the last several meetings, we haven't been charged by council to actually engage the topic and come up with a position, nor do we have funds sort of allocated for some of the studies that Drew has mentioned, which I think are critical. And we've spent more time sort of over the last six months focusing on long range planning policies from the county that are outside the borders of the town and sort of less officially inside the borders of the town. And in my opinion, the the attainable housing plan and now the workforce housing VTA have the potential to have a much more impactful impact on the town than say, you know, the the density caps in downtown Bethesda, although those are important. So I just would urge the council, we don't need to know the exact plan that the county is gonna put forward. We know what they're trying to do. We know the goal is to create a path for duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes at a minimum inside the town or on the edges of the town. And we can use the information out there to do our own studies in order to have information when these policies come up. And yes, well, council member Friedman's presentation was on attainable housing housing. It's not a coincidence that within a week of after that, he put forward a different pivot. And so there's clearly a push at the county council level to do this. And I think we need to make sure that we have at least the information so that the town council can make informed decisions. So I just urge the town council, I know this is on the agenda later, to to charge the committee and give some budget to do these studies, get feedback from town from town residents, and formulate a policy position so that we're informed as these sort of changing policies come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jay. Great. Scott, do you also want to provide some comments? Saw you unmuted yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was an accident.
Oh.
Listening. Thanks.
Oh, okay. Sure, sure. Didn't wanna. Great. Is there anyone else that would like to provide comments? Okay, thank you for that. And as mentioned, we'll be discussing the ZTA later this evening. So we'll open now the actual the public hearing ordinance to amend chapter four, which is part of our building code to clarify applicability and make technical corrections. I'm gonna throw it over to Ron to provide a brief summary of this, and then we'll open it up for any public comments.
Sure. So this ordinance would accomplish a few technical corrections and implement some recommendations from our land use task force would clarify the definition of main building to reflect that it applies to any sort of residential structure. We've in the past locally used the term house, so house is being replaced with building. We've had an exemption from setbacks for cornices and eaves. And in the past, staff has applied that to accessory buildings as well. But with this amendment, that would be made express setbacks for low growing plantings would also be applied expressly in an alley situation. And that's about it. And we reorganized it a bit, moved the purposes provision, the intents to the the front of the ordinance to make it clear that applies to the whole chapter. We did send it to the county council for comment. The county council acknowledged receipt but didn't have any comments for us.
And just for those on the line, whenever there is any proposed amendment to our building code, part of the the good neighbor thing is to make sure that the county is aware of these changes as well. They can't necessarily veto on these changes, but we want to make sure that they're well aware of them. Great. Thank you, Ron. So we'll open it up to any public comments on on this technical ordinance amendments out there. Okay, I'm not seeing any.
And just for the record, we also did not receive any written comments. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Great. So I unless I hear from anyone, I'm gonna close the public comment and open it up to county council discussion or the introduction of a of a vote. No discussion? Would anyone like to open this up for a vote?
Still moved.
We approve the ordinance to amend chapter four of the building code to clarify its applicability and make technical corrections.
Thank you, Rich. Second, who's second? I think Stephanie seconded. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. It's unanimous.
Rich, thank you. And thank you and thank the committee for all that diligent work to sleuth through all those details. That wasn't fun or easy. So thank you very much.
It was the committee.
Well, please pass it on to the committee.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you. So the next item up for discussion is a the ordinance to clarify regulations regarding electric vehicle charging stations and cords in the town rites of way. Again, for those on the line, there were a few instances throughout the town where people were utilizing extension cords that were going across public sidewalks and charging their cars, which was posing a tripping hazard. And obviously, although not explicitly addressed in our ordinance, I was kind of implied, the intent here is to effectively update the ordinance so that cords would not be allowed in the rites of way. And in addition to that, the 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 idea that given our in certain parts of the town, there are people who are sharing driveways, driveways might be very narrow. So for those that want to install a charging station but are unable to do so and and instead are looking to installing a station in the right the town right of way, that process would take place through a variance process that would come before the town council because there's a lot of different considerations. So for now, and Ron, please tell me if I'm wrong and how I summarize that that ordinance.
No, no, that that that's great. And the ordinance also makes a couple technical corrections as well that that Dave has noted. The the code had some antiquated language about obstructions in the street and the need to place warning lights if someone's blocking a street. So we've brought those up to date to conform to current practices. And then as the mayor noted, if a charging station is approved to be installed in the right of way through a variance, then we've also proposed in this accompanying resolution, which is item three B on your agenda, a resolution to adopt standard conditions that might apply to deployment of a charging station in the right of way. And we've borrowed from Montgomery County and Tacoma Park, I believe, and come up with some other general regulations of our own so that we can make sure any deployments that are approved are safe and don't present ISOs.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So we'll take then items three A and three B kind of together. I'll open it up for for discussion. Barney, please.
Thank you for this. And I think this broadly holds to what we set out in our previous discussion. So that's great. The one question I have was, I didn't quite understand, and and I know, Ron, you can explain this. On section four hyphen fifty, we have A, and then it's unlawful. You know, without getting a permit. B, and then C says, except for telecommunications, electric transmission lines and other facilities operated by public utility or similar service, it shall be unlawful to place any cable or similar facility on over under a public sidewalk or paved street surface. And I'm trying to help me here understand how that reconciles with what I thought I'd read earlier on, but maybe I was mistaken. That basically, yes, we prohibit this, but if you get a license or permission from the town manager, then you can go ahead. This last paragraph reads as an absolute prohibition and doesn't seem to give even the opportunity for for some some license. So could you just help me walk, understand this?
Sure. So we do begin with the proposition that it's unlawful. So four fifty C does say, you know, other than the utility companies and telecommunications companies, you can't have cables in the right of way. But we will allow a charging station with a variance. So someone would seek a variance from that general prohibition. Someone could get a variance from section four fifty C.
So why then? Then help me understand what's the difference between four fifty C and four fifty A? Because there we already say it's unlawful. What am I missing? You know, I guess the instinct I have for reading a text is first you say what's unlawful, then you offer what is the potential means by which someone could still get permission if they went through a process and got a license or whatever. But when we then close out the discussion saying, by the way, we're reminding you again, it's unlawful, I just, as a reader, I don't quite understand what we're trying to drive at.
I may that I may help a little bit. When we were talking about the telecommunications facilities before and about the five G towers and so forth, one of the things that we that we, you know, we set a whole bunch of rules for those kinds of facilities being installed. And I think A is the general prohibition. But C says, except for the telecommunications, electronic, so it it provide, the first one is a general prohibition, but then we come and say, well, that's except for telecommunications and electric transmission. And we needed that because they do have a right of way and for some things, they have an absolute right to do stuff. So we needed to exempt them. And I think that was the reason or one of the reasons why that C needed to be there.
Yeah, that's that's definitely one of the reasons. And also so paragraph A provides that you can't have cables in the right of way generally, in the grass, unless the manager issues a permit. So the manager can issue a permit for an irrigation system, an electronic pet containment system. Those are things in the grass in the right of way. But then C says, you can't have cables over a sidewalk or over the paved street. And in that instance, the manager is not able to issue a permit. So C is a clarification of A, a limitation of A, if that makes sense.
So the thought here is then that there's that if someone seeks a variant, someone seeks to still put in an electric charging station because they have to, they don't have a driveway or whatever, and they want to have an electric car. They have to go through a variance process that in order for and it would have to come to the town council. It's not something that the town manager could resolve.
Correct.
Okay. Do we have any, and just help me refresh my memory on this. In respect to our other ordinances, do we do we say that that variance process is allowed, or we're quiet silent on that and it's just assumed?
So section four sixty of the code, which is not reproduced in this ordinance, does say that a variance is available from any provision of chapter four, including setbacks, height, etc. And in this case, from the prohibition of cables in the right of way. So our code similarly, our code says in the affirmative, you know, a building may not be twenty-five feet from the front property line. And you can see a variance from that. This section says you can't have a wire over a sidewalk, but you can see a variance from that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, okay. I get it. All right. I just wanted to make sure that I could I I was only looking at the text and I hadn't gotten that the further down is the is the is the variance process. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And I I can include that in the ordinance to make that clear for our next phase for our public hearing.
I would welcome that because I, you know, I feel that I've said this before, and I may be the only councilman who can, but I think there will be cases when people want electric cars, they can't put them on their driveway. It would be extraordinarily expensive for them to do so. And if they came up with an appropriate design for an electric charging station and, you know, the cable was properly buried underneath the ground, and da 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 da, and you know, we could, it could be something we would look at. It's up to a variance. I just don't want to, I don't want to send the message that that if you want an electric car, but you don't have a driveway, you're out of luck. I just, that bothers me.
Yeah, so the intent of this ordinance is to allow for a variance. And what I'm saying is I'll make that clearer in the draft by putting our existing.
But I get I get the point. We all on board. There would have to be a variance process. So that's that's fine.
Okay.
Could I, could I, per Barney's point, now that I'm looking at it, you know, one suggestion to clarify the way four dash fifty A and C interact would be for like at the end of A, for it to say something like or somewhere in A for there to be some clause, some clause saying, you know, like all of this is still subject to C.
Okay. Okay, yep. Can do that.
See first.
Good point. You're saying C first.
Yeah, if that's the most telling or overarching statement, then why not make it upfront? And then everything else follows. I don't know. I'll leave it up to you.
Okay, I can do both.
You don't have to put it both.
I was just thinking that putting that clause in there would do less violence to the draft and accomplish the same thing. But I don't, I don't really care.
Yeah.
Either way.
Okay, I can, I can think about that.
You can work it out. Yeah, okay.
Thank you both. Any other questions that came up about the ordinance? And then I'll switch over to the policy. And okay, how about the policy? Meaning there's a laundry list that the the town staff has put together of considerations so that when this does come in front of the council, a future council or us as a council, that we have like a a list of not a checklist, but a list of things to consider when we're considering the variance. Does anyone have anything to add to this list? Or is anything about this list unclear?
I just have an overall question for Dave. Just to clarify, I looked at these, but I didn't spend a lot of time comparing them with the county's set of standards and rules for this. I just want to know how closely these hew to those.
Yeah, these adopt all of the county standards, and then they add a few like for the applicability of our urban forest ordinance and some things that you know, I guess the we sort of cribbed largely from Tacoma Park as far as no commercial, no signage on them. I don't think the county regulates the signage, but we wanted to do that. So they adopt all the county regulations. So any installer who installs in the county will be familiar with these. And then there are a few minor ones that we've added just to make sure that we are clear under our there are a few minor ones that we've added just to make sure that we are clear under our regulations.
All right, thanks.
Great. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so given the discussion, aside from the changes or just kind of reordering and clarification changes to the ordinance that you would like for Ron to do. How do we all feel about possibly introducing this ordinance for the March Town Council meeting?
I would do that. I would vote for that.
Okay, we'd like to introduce that.
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay. So we'll put that on deck for March for public hearing on this. So, great. The next item up.
Sorry, I just back up really quick, Irene. I guess the resolution could be adopted tonight. We could go ahead and get that in place, or we could do it all.
All at the same.
All in March, all at the same time.
So I don't, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but if there are going to be some public comments about this policy, I'd like to do it in at the same time, meaning hear, hear what we what residents are going to say about this particular ordinance, and that might change a couple of things on the policy. But I'll just, okay, I see a thumbs up.
I would, I would hold it over. Okay. As currently written, the resolution makes reference to the code sections allowing a variance, which we've not yet adopted. So I think it probably makes sense to approve them together.
Together, okay. Thanks, Dave, for that clarification. Appreciate it. Okay, I think we're good there. So we'll move on to the Bethesda downtown plan, minor master plan amendment. So the public hearing is just to, again, everyone on the line. There was a public hearing in front of the planning board. And I testified, gosh, I want to say it was right after Thanksgiving, but I don't quite remember if that's true. That you know, we had some concerns with respect to the elimination of the the development cap. And provided that if if it is the intent to eliminate the cap, then there should be some process in place, some level of periodic review that that goes to the the lived experience, if you will, of what it is for our surrounding communities to be dealing with all of this development. And if there is no development cap and it keeps going and going and going. And the current process being that whenever an individual project is put in front of the planning board that they just assess at a project by project basis, what the impact would be, rather than what we were hoping for is more more comprehensive, cumulative, holistic, whatever word we want to use. It just kind of takes a look at the lived experience. So though that was not accepted by the planning board, so effectively the the same set of the ZTA around the minor master plan amendment was sent to the county council. So we have another opportunity to express our concerns. The the hearing is to be held on February twenty sixth at seven PM at the Regional Services Center. I will be on a plane and I think Barney is also going to be on vacation. Is there anyone else available to personally deliver this testimony? That evening? Otherwise, we have to just submit it in writing. So I just want to start.
I I can either. I actually have surgery the next morning, so I'm not.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
In shape to do anything.
For sure. Totally get that.
What, what time and where is the hearing?
It's at seven PM. Likely, it goes from like seven to nine o'clock, but likely whoever's going to speak is going to be at the front. It's at the Regional Services Center downtown Bethesda. So if you don't know, it's like on Edgemore or something like that.
I can do it.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll put you on the list to submit and to to personally deliver the the testimony. Thank you for that. And and I don't know how many minutes you're going to have.
My virgin run. This is very exciting.
You'll do fantastically well. You'll do fantastically well.
Christen me.
Chris, christen you?
It's not, it's not like.
Like a baby.
Yes, yes, yes.
And it's not like you haven't done public speaking before.
Correct. So I don't personally know, because I've never testified personally, and maybe Barney, you have, I don't know if it's three minutes or six minutes that that the representative for the town will have, because that affects like our testimonies. I just wanted to clarify that.
Right. Dave, you can clearly find out, but I think the electeds are given a few minutes more than than other regular folk. And also electeds are always called upon first. So you will probably be very close to the front because there's no other municipality that borders downtown Bethesda.
That's right. You could be.
Great. So and I'm I'm good. I know I have done this before. I know how long to I know how long the document should be delivered orally, so.
Okay, good, 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 good. So thank you. Stephanie will get you signed up tomorrow. Tomorrow morning, tomorrow afternoon.
Great.
And you'll be provided with all that information. So now we go to the testimony itself. I let me open it up here. I provided you with a draft testimony. That was then, there were some additional comments from the from some members of the long range planning committee. And then later to, I'm sorry, earlier this evening, I received yet another set of comments from another member of that committee. So I think what I'd like to do, and Barney, you also gave some additional commentary as well. Specific comments. So I am wondering here if with respect to the testimony that was provided to you yesterday in advance of today. If anyone has any comments as to the general direction, is there anything that isn't mentioned that should be mentioned? Things such as that. What came earlier today, just just so that you know, was a resident had a separate conversation with Elza Heisel McCoy, who was the planning department's down county manager, I guess, director. Anyway, he's, he's, he's been the the face of this minor master plan amendment. And he had an, this this gentleman had an opportunity to speak with Elza earlier today. I asked him some specific questions around the analysis that was done to determine that eliminating the development cap is is pretty much the same thing as the three different scenarios that were originally, meaning like just add 10 million, 25 million, 50 million, whatever, whatever it was. And magically, everything came out to the same as if you just eliminated the cap altogether. So when pressed a little bit more about how that analysis was done and how it just didn't mesh. The answers were not would say they they weren't able to explain some of the strange results in the report. So with that, there's some additional language that this LRP member would like to add. It's not very much, but it's it's more specificity around the different analysis that was done. Which I can share with you after this meeting. It's not materially different. It's just going to add, going to add to the testimony. So with that, all that being said, I wanted to kind of fan it out for general comments on the testimony that was delivered to you yesterday, the draft. And then we can go over Barney, you wanted to rearrange some some items as well. And then I can go ahead and and add in and we can kind of clean this up over the next few days. So I'll start with that.
All for.
Sure, sure.
I think especially given this, and thank you very much, Steph, for going to give the testimony. And I hope that all the county council members will be there. I don't know if they all will show up for something which is not in Rockville, but anyway, we'll find out. But I think it's likely that we'll find that there's both a oral version you can give and a longer written version.
Yes.
That will be filed. And I I really feel strongly that the core of your mess of the message here is that we want periodic reviews to look at the plan holistically, to measure what is the total net change in affordable housing, counting the loss of naturally occurring against the new MPTUs. We want a careful look at transportation, the use of the bike lanes. We want to look at other things that could be of interest, including how we finance a rec center, how we we potentially further widen the sidewalks in downtown Bethesda, which I think is enormously successful and a wonderful change. And 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 I really would like, my my personal view is that the oral testimony should just hit hard on the need for those periodic reviews, and that's what's lost. And I think a lot of the other material and even very good points about, you know, the need for the comprehensive data, the point that you just raised, Irene, on behalf of the committee member about you know, the issue there, all that is good stuff. But but, you know, I think an oral testimony, less is more, and we have to really decide what our priorities are and just let Steph hit that really hard and clearly. And we've already lost, we lost at the at the planning board. So we go into this, you know, with with not with momentum, but fighting the inertia, which is going to be to simply approve what the planning board recommended. So I just feel like we've got to be really clear and focused and simple in what we ask for and just press for that thing.
Agree. Any other comments?
Yeah, I I agree with Barney's comment. I think that was also the, from the perspective of the long range planning committee. You know, that was really their main contribution to this was to stress the need for these reviews. And they also gave a fairly detailed set of of standards and measures that could be applied. So I definitely strongly think that in the oral testimony, we kind of really have to hammer that home.
So so that I understand, so tomorrow we'll figure out just how many minutes that Stephanie wants to deliver this. I'll turn over everybody's commentary to it, everyone to the council, to then, you know, come up with the final the final submitted testimony. And then Stephanie, you can take it from there to figure out what oral testimony.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I'll, I'll boil it down to a couple of key points.
Okay. So are we okay with that as an approach? Okay, I'm seeing. Good. Okay. Wonderful. Great, great. So for just to clarify, tomorrow morning, I'll provide the, if you will, version three based on the feedback. And then once we're all feeling as if version three is hitting on the points, Barney, that you just mentioned, that will become our written submitted testimony. That has to be submitted. I don't remember if it's two days or one day before the hearing itself. Especially since the oral will be a little bit different. But we'll, we'll figure that out. Dave, if you can help me on that and figure when that deadline is, that would be helpful.
Side Stephanie up to, I'll need to know when when we need to do that, but I'll try to chase that down tomorrow.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Great. I think we're good there. Let me go back to. Thank you again, Steph. All right. Okay, we're doing good. So the next is the ZTA. Twenty five oh two workforce housing legislation. So for purposes of just everyone being on the line. Last week, council member Fritzen, along with council member Natalie Fanny Gonzalez, introduced a a ZTA, which they said they felt reflected the feedback that had been received during all of the listening sessions that had occurred around the county. In a nutshell, and as communicated via a town crier earlier this week, the intent is to look at corridors. So these are not the same corridors as had been defined during the attainable housing strategies. For example, Wisconsin and Connecticut avenues were defined as growth corridors by the county following Thrive Montgomery twenty fifty. But what this ZTA does is add other area, other boulevards around the county that follow a specific width, a number of lanes and things like that, which affect, just as it affects the town, means that the East West Highway, the portion of East West Highway that is town lots, those lots that are but East West Highway and those lots that are but Connecticut Avenue would be impacted by this CTA. What this ZTA is saying is that through the optional method of development, so unlike before with the attainable housing strategies initiative, where things could be done, sorry, the multifamily housing could be built by right. This ZTA would follow the rules as defined for optional method of development. So what does that mean? If if a developer purchased a property that exists, just just for example, on Connecticut Avenue and wanted to build a multifamily housing unit, they would have to go through a public commentary process. So that would allow for not only residents within the town Chevy Chase, but even those who live, depending on where it is, section three, section five, like everyone could comment on on this proposed development. It would allow for the building of a duplex, meaning two units, a triplex, a townhouse units and apartment building, but the limitation would be a height of forty feet. And what is so tangent to that, depending on whether it was four units or less, if the technical amendment, which is currently working through a state, the General Assembly in Annapolis, if were that to pass, then the municipalities would have the ability to regulate the the development, the multifamily housing development, it was for if it was four units or less. If it's five units or more, again, you still have the optional method of development that would process that would need to take place, meaning all the public commentary and things like that. But the actual municipal regulations would not necessarily apply. In addition, if it's three units or more, that third unit or equating to fifteen percent of the units would have to be workforce housing, meaning that the price of that unit would need to fall within the bounds of those making anywhere from seventy percent of the area median income to one hundred and twenty percent of area median income. And if I'm not mistaken, that equates to a hundred and forty thousand dollars ish, maybe a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars for a couple. So if they make that or less, that's the hundred and twenty percent level or a family of four, I think it goes up to a hundred and eighty six thousand, but please don't quote me on that. I may, I may be mixing the numbers there, but I'm in the ballpark. That unit would have to be considered to be workforce housing. So the intent is for teachers, firefighters, police officers to be able to afford those units. They do not need to be the same size unit as the so-called market rate units, but they they need to be built in there. So what the, in addition, there's some some money being put forth for like increasing the housing opportunity fund and and kind of affordable affordable housing funds that are out there at a county level. And I'm getting some reverb. So if someone could, thank you. Appreciate that. So that in a nutshell, I'm sure I'm missing some details here is is really what this particular ZTA is is trying to focus on with this thing. And I open it up now to, because I understand that that obviously, given earlier comments, long range planning committee has some ideas around this. And then we can discuss like, what's the best approach that 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 we can take? The first, sorry, before I turn it over to Joy and anyone else that wants to talk, the first opportunity for public comment is going to be on March eleventh. When I spoke with council member Fritzen, he he reiterated that this is going to be one of many opportunities for public comment on this ZTA. So it's my understanding that on the eleventh of March, they're So it's my understanding that on the 11th of March, they're going to hear from the greater community as to what the reaction is and what adjustments, amendments need to be made. The, then it will go to the public, I'm sorry, the PHP committee, the housing and parks, I'm missing the first P. Something, and I, I don't remember, I'm blanking out. It's the PHP committee, which Andrew Fritzen chairs, and they'll have a few work sessions based on the public commentary and then adjust ZTA accordingly, and then it will go back to the Greater County Council, where there will then be another public hearing, if you will, on the final language. So this is going to be months in advance. It's not, it's not a situation where in March, there's going to be one public hearing, and then they're going to turn around and vote on this right away, within a few weeks, or it's, it's not the case at all. So I do, I do want to clarify that. Anyway, with that, I'll turn it over to, I don't know if Elena's on the line, Joy, or?
Yeah, she is.
Oh, good, okay.
So she can kind of summarize some of the positions on the committee. Jay has already expressed some of what, you know, we have from the committee. And I just do want to acknowledge, I mean, this is going to be in what Ellen tells us, but, you know, we, we're really lucky, the members that we do have on long range planning, because we, we've got kind of a breadth of expertise of people who have worked in land development, multifamily development. You know, our resident Drew, who's on the line, who's also worked in real estate development. And we've got quite a lot of legal expertise on the committee as well, and prior political expertise. So it's really quite broad. And we also naturally have a range of views on the issue of multifamily housing within neighborhoods like ours. You know, I, I have said many times, you know, the, the way I think about this is, is within the context of being in a, a very a dense area already. And I do think that there is a, a value to single family and, you know, really at the most, small scale development in a community like ours, because we are surrounded by probably the densest area in the whole county. So, you know, there's a, a range of views we've seen in the town. Some people are absolutely positively opposed to anything besides single family residences in the town, and there are others who are quite open to more density. And I think that's, you know, not, I think, you know, we also have that breadth of views within the committee, which is great, because we've got good resident representation. And so I'm going to turn this over to Ellen, so she can just kind of share some of the conversations that we've had in the committee, and then, you know, she's going to reiterate Jay's recommendation to the council. Ellen? You're muted. I don't know if we can, can we unmute her?
Perhaps Dave can.
Yeah, what's, what is it?
Is it two four oh?
The two four oh number.
Ask to unmute? But I don't know if I can unmute.
Hello.
There we go, hello.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, and just wanted to say good evening. I think I know most of you, but again, I'll just introduce myself. My name is Ellen Cornelius Erickson. I'm the chair of the Long Range Planning Committee, and I just wanted to talk to you tonight. As the chair of the LRPC, I wanted to let you know that there are members of the committee who've raised some concerns. And so I want to be transparent and share those with you, but not everyone on the committee agrees. So I am not speaking with unanimous consent right now. So some committee members think that the LRPC and the committee process is working well. The LRPC has received periodic updates regarding the town, retaining its existing land use authorities, what's going on over in Annapolis right now. And some members think that no changes in frequency are necessary. So they think the council liaison process is working well, and there's transparent communication between the committee members and the town council. The town council has sought expert legal advice for appropriate, so they don't doubt that. They rely on that and think that the town council should be applauded with significant progress that it has made so far. Other committee members think that there are three issues that need to be raised. So I'm here on behalf of those members who raised and reviewed. First, some members think there's been a lack of consultation with the LRPC. Second, some think that there has been infrequent reliance on the LRPC. And third issue is a path forward. So first, the committee recently learned that the town council has partnered with other municipalities in Montgomery County to amend the state law that gives the town of Chevy Chase authority to regulate single family housing. However, the town council is only seeking amendments for four units or fewer per residence. This was news to us. The town council is not seeking an amendment for authority over four units per residence. So five and more is greater. In September, the town council's position was to submit a bill to the Maryland Legislature to codify municipalities' authority to regulate all residential buildings, regardless of size or type. The LRPC was not asked to provide an analysis of this issue or consulted before the town council made the decision. Some people on the committee think that we could have provided helpful feedback. It is completely within the council's discretion to not include the committee in complex closed-door negotiations. But the issue of the town's control over multifamily development within the town has been on the agenda for years. If the LRPC had been engaged earlier, we could have helped inform whether the correct balancing point was four units versus two units versus ten units. It then would have been up to the council to follow the committee's recommendation or arrive at their own solution. Second, the town council rarely asks the LRPC for its feedback. Some of the committee members think that it doesn't seem that the town council regularly relies on the expertise of the volunteers or the sentiments of the committee. We're a committee that's composed of residents with various backgrounds. We have volunteers with backgrounds in the law, commercial real estate, business entrepreneurs, and transportation planning. In November, we were told that the council had decided not to take a position on the attainable housing initiative, so there wasn't a need to proceed with analysis. However, the council now has less than a month to prepare the town's response to ZTA 2502. I raise this as a way of stating that the LRPC and its members are a valuable asset to the town council. Some people feel that has been overlooked, but we all hope that you will rely on us. Third, I'm not here just to complain and walk away, dump on you. I'm here to get things done and directly speak to you so we can figure out a path forward. Some people on the committee would like more work. They enjoyed editing Maryland testimony regarding the Bethesda overlay zone, and they like to work on issues such as questions to clarify the ZTA. Some members of the LRPC would respectfully suggest that the town council increase its consultation. So that could be at more regular intervals or more written communication, more tasking, more analysis, more formal involvement. When advanced consultation is possible, some members support the notion of increasing the interplay between the town council and the LRPC, leveraging the expertise of the committee. We understand that things are moving quickly, but some people on the committee would be happy to join ad hoc work sessions or tackle issues in their expertise over email. So in conclusion, thank you for your time and consideration of some of the members of the LRPC's concern. By allowing some committee members to share their various viewpoints, it does foster transparency and encourage public participation in governance. This inclusivity builds trust between the town council and the residents, which reduces opposition to future policies. I appreciate all that you do on the town council as you work for the best interests of the town of Chevy Chase. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. I really appreciate your comments, and I know that they're on behalf of the entire committee. I, I think there's a lot of good, good ideas and good food for thought here. And would like to open it up to council members to discuss this a little bit more. I have to say, in, in my years at the council, I've personally never interacted with a committee that wants more work. Usually it's the reverse. So I'm really appreciative that, that there are so many good people that want to lend their skills and ensure that we arrive at a situation that, that works. I, before opening it up, I do want to kind of make one comment about what, what occurred with the technical amendment. I, I do not want to give the impression that the town of Chevy Chase was in any way in control of the situation when it, when regarding this technical amendment. The town of Chevy Chase reached out to other municipalities. As we noted, kind of the, the, if you will, outdated state code that reflected that, that municipalities had the ability to regulate single family homes and single family zones. And we were looking for that clarification, knowing that there was this discussion occurring at a county level, and frankly, at a state level, about developing more multifamily housing. At that point, we reached out not only to other municipalities to gain their perspective and comments and ideas, but also to our state delegates. And it's at the state delegate level. So there's Montgomery County State Delegation, and then there's a Greater State of Maryland State Delegation. From the standpoint of the Montgomery County State Delegation, there was a an interest in ensuring that, that the, the amendment, the clarification was, was as crystal clear as possible. And as you know, just as in your committee and just as in the town, there's a wide variety of viewpoints on what municipalities can and, and should or should not be able to control when it comes to buildings. If you will, I'll use the expression, the sausage, how the sausage was made, in, in terms of arriving at four units or, meaning a development that's four units or less would be under municipal regulatory authority, but if it's five units or more, that is something that was discussed out of, of at least our ability to influence. That happened at a state level to, to not have a standard of, you know, de facto denial of, of multifamily housing. And the, what was, what was stated to all of us as municipalities, not just the town of Chevy Chase, was that you either agree to this or you're not going to get a technical clarification. And that was the stark, that was the question that was put in front of us. And in terms of having some clarification, that at the very least, it's four units or, or four, three, two, one units out there versus not having that kind of clarification. And if there, if there was a ZTA passed, which we didn't know at the time, about having, you know, duplex anywhere or whatever, and there would be some lawsuits placed by developers or, or wherever, whoever, interest. We, that wasn't something that the municipalities collectively were, were necessarily interested in. So in terms of the long range planning committee providing feedback as to what that number should or should not have been, that number was provided to us. That was not something that the town of Chevy Chase came up with. And it's, or the municipalities, the collective municipalities, that was something that was discussed at the Montgomery County delegation and at the, frankly, at the county level. And, and you, the, the idea that this technical amendment has passed unanimously from the county council unanimously at a, at a Montgomery County delegate level shows that there is, and frankly, the municipalities, out of the twelve municipalities, there was eleven that, that did agree to this with the twelfth abstaining that said, at least we would have this clarification. So that's how it came about. It's strictly the circumstances of making sure that there was clarification there. So, but probably talked too much. Happy to open this up for, for further discussion. And Joy, please feel free to provide some additional comments on next steps.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I, I think your summary of, of what happened with the, with the technical amendment is, is fine. I think, you know, the larger point is, you know, how, how would we like to engage the expertise we do have on the committee now with respect to the ZTA? And now that we've got something to act on, I think when we discussed this one or two council meetings ago, we just had these AHSI and these other proposals out there, but we didn't really have anything concrete. And I thought, you know, there were members of the council at the time who were like, well, we could study a whole bunch of stuff, but we didn't really have anything to hang our hats on. Well, now we do. And so, you know, I think it, it is entirely appropriate to lean on the expertise we have in town to figure out how, you know, what are some of the questions? And Irene, you've already kind of collected a lot of those from us. And so, you know, I'd be happy to engage with the rest of my colleagues on, you know, how we can continue to track this issue. This also, as you've mentioned, Irene, is not going to be something that's going to be decided most immediately. Again, we have our first opportunity as residents of the county to comment on this at the March 11th hearing, county council hearing, and presumably, I don't know if the committee meetings, the PHP committee meetings are going to be open at all for us to participate in.
Probably not open, but certainly the idea that we, we'll be able to listen in on the discussions.
Right, right. And then, and then there would be, you know, things that follow up. I mean, just as a, a point of clarity, the the Maryland General Assembly closes session on April 7. So we would certainly hope by then that if we can get some positive movement on that technical amendment, and actually, if it gets through and it passes, that would certainly, you know, do a lot to reduce our exposure to multifamily development that exists now under the state law, the Housing Affordability and Expansion Act. And, you know, that also can help inform, you know, what kinds of protections we would be seeking under, you know, the ZTA, as it, it's going to get shaped over the next several months.
Yeah, thank you for that. I, I, I completely agree. I think that, you know, this is a great time to put forth some specific questions and also potential recommendations for how the ZTA could be shaped, so that there is, there, there's some wiggle room in, in, in different areas as I've read through the legislation. And I think that there's a really good opportunity to, I, I believe that the relationship is there that there would, there would be an openness on the part of the county council to be able to take in some additional feedback. So anyway, Barney, please.
Yeah, I think on the, on the core point, thank you for all the discussion, and thank you, Ellen, for presenting those comments. I think on the core point, I think on the core point, um, but this is a very difficult issue for everybody, right? I mean, there's, as you correctly observed, there are lots of people in town who want to, believe that more density is good. There are a lot of people in town who don't want it at all. There are a lot of people somewhere in between who are willing to accept it under certain circumstances and not other circumstances. And, and, uh, we're only five people, uh, and we do our best. But I think the reason for the committees is to try to tap into, uh, more expertise, but also just more points of tangency with our fellow residents. So I think this is a great opportunity and, and to, uh, have the committee look into the issues and come back with their thoughts about it. I think you made exactly the right point, Joy, that, that it's very difficult to ask people to do things when we don't know what it looks like yet. And that was really the case, you know, in terms of just sort of a general background bit of work or something, you know, that's hard to do. But, but, uh, we now do actually have a very specific, uh, Z T A in front of us. And I think it'd be great to have the committee really dig into it and come back with our comments. The, the, the fact that has to come out of this, and Ellen brought this up, is that, that. And, uh, precisely because of your point Irene, that, that we don't control these events by definition. And we have deadlines that are given to us by the county, times by which we have to testify. So that I think people in a committee who wish to be engaged have to realize, and it sounds like this committee is, you know, happily doing that. That there could need for a special meeting or something accelerated in a review or comments have to be returned by 24 hour. I mean, there, there are deadlines that come up that have to be responded to, or else that person may not be able to participate in that particular juncture. That's all. But I think in the spirit of, of having the committee be engaged and coming back with their thoughts about this stuff, great. And, and, uh, just, just, we have to make sure that it's timely. And timely means in time for the council to take account of those views before we have to respond. So all these things back up into certain deadlines that we'd have to be aware of. But, but having that further conversation, those further conversations and involvement would be great.
So one of the things that, oh, sorry, I don't, I, I want to provide an opportunity for, for Stephanie and Rich to also comment before I dive in.
I don't have anything to add.
I, I, I don't have much to add for sure. Uh, and I think it's always useful for. When we get proposals from the state or the county to, to amend things that affect us. It's always useful to have, uh, the committee take a look at that and recommend to us the questions that we ought to ask. I don't think that leads us necessarily to starting studies. About a particular impact on the town. I think it's more, we would go to them for. What are the questions that we need to be asking concerning this legislation that would help the legislators? hone in on what is appropriate for, um, you know, municipalities in general. So, um. And I, and I, I do want to make. Uh, we, we have, um, you know, the, 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 if this technical amendment goes through. We have protected the town in the sense of, uh. Making sure that whatever is built would be built within the footprint of what we define. And so whether it's a tri, a duplex, a triplex or a quadruplex. And as we've talked about in the, in, in, in many of our discussions, many of the houses in the town. Already accommodate multi-families. And, uh, and, and, you know, would, would be classified as triplexes in some cases. So we've already, you know, we've already gone there and hopefully we can get that part of it nailed down. The part that concerns me is the increased development. It's the, you know, what are, what are the impacts if, if somebody comes in and says, well, we want to put in. You know, five units in this, this particular area. And, and I don't know what that would look like, to be honest with you. And so one of the things that maybe the committee. In, in addition to looking at the language and asking questions. Could come up with, uh, what would things look like, you know? Give us, give us some information of what would be the maximum kind of building that could be built under the proposal as it exists. Or the Z T A that's being circulated. So, so there are things that they can be helpful to us on. But I, I do want to, I, I, I don't want to go to the step of us starting studies to do stuff. When we, when we need to be asking the legislative, the, the, our representatives in, in the state and the county. You know, have you thought about this? And we think these kinds of things need to be, uh, thought through before you, you know, you take the next step. So. Certainly have. You know. Real appreciation for these committees because they are the heart of, of getting information to us and, uh. And helping us in some of these decisions. So if they want to get more involved, let's, let's get them more involved.
Thank you, Rich. So I, I'm going to go back to a few of the, um, questions and, and comments that were brought out that, at the, during the public comment period. And then, and then, um, the, the ones that, that Ellen brought through. So, um. You know, not naming names or whatever, the two people that talked about it and there was, you know, the, the, what I wrote down. Disagree, uh, with the, uh, the Z T A. It affects qual, adding multi-family housing would affect quality of life, concerns about traffic and sewer. And to me, um, what, what I would like to understand, because, you know, starting from no. Um, I don't think that the, the, the town council operates this way. I don't think that the town council just says no. I think, um, to, to just about anything that comes around, right? And I think that, at least the town council members that are on the town council right now are coming from a place of, let me find out more. Let me see what can be done. Let's try and work it so that it's, um, as advantageous as possible to. Our residents' concerns and needs and, and, and the like. So for me, what I'd like to understand, um, in, you know, and bringing out this thing and kind of the formal analysis that, that the, um. Long range planning committee, some long range planning committee members want to, to go forward. I'd like to better understand the exact concerns, um, that are brought forth. And, and, you know, when things such as traffic are, are noted, um, later on, we're going to hear from, um. Barney and talking about the long range planning committee and different parking. Obviously, East West Highway and Connecticut Avenue do not have on-street parking, um, capability. So is the traffic concern that of, of street parking occurring on those, um. Kind of parallel streets that are, that are, oh, sorry, perpendicular streets to Connecticut, that they're going to be overloaded? Or is it traffic coming from Connecticut is going to be? More so through town? Like, I just don't understand what the traffic concern might be. That might not already be, uh, a part of a study that, 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 uh, the Public Services Committee is, is considering. The second part about sewer, again, I'm not quite understanding because we had, we just finished up a, a multi-year W S S C upgrade effort. So I'm unclear about what the concerns are, um, about water and sewer, um, in, in that regard. And, and maybe I'm missing something, like this is where, um, Joy, to your point, there's, there's a lot of expertise here. I'm not a person in construction. I'm not a person in law. I'm not, I'm just kind of reading through this and, um, knowing what. The little that I know about the current issues that are going around in the town. I am not understanding that if some lots were developed, uh, to be townhouses. Or, or. You know, again, you have that 40-foot height limit right now. Uh, I'm not understanding where the, the, the quality of life would be impacted when it would just be, uh, at the, at the edges of town. Uh, I've asked this question already to, uh, council member Fritzen, uh, and he has told me verbally, and it's also been clarified in writing. That there, if there's lots that are going to be combined as a result of the C T A would not be. A lot on Connecticut and then someone buys the lot behind that lot. And then you end up having a chain go all the way down Virgilia or a chain go all the way down Aspen Street. If there's lots that are going to be combined, they would also have to be a budding that corridor. So it would be two lots on Connecticut. Obviously, using the optional method of development, that would, would result in a larger building. Certainly, I'm not naive about that. But if we're talking about single lots, um, I'm not entirely clear right now where the, um. Where the, I shouldn't put it that way. I'd like to understand the questions that come out and the concerns that come out if one of these lots were developed, if two of these lots were developed. So that we can be able to feed those questions accordingly. And get those, get those, uh, responses so that we can develop our, our first hearing. If I'm working backwards, if the hearing, um, this first hearing on March 11th occurs, we have to have our. Like a draft testimony or having at least the ideas of what we want in, in the testimony by February 28th. If there's an understanding by February 28th, the points that, that we all want to make as a town. That means we've got a little over two weeks to get those thoughts together. And if it ends up becoming a general statement with a bunch of questions, so be it. But I, I, I feel like there's a great opportunity here for the L R P to provide either specific suggestions on how to. Alter the language, specific questions, recommendations, uh, and, and then we can kind of work it from there. And if there are specific studies, um, that, that need to be figured out in the next two weeks versus, you know. Over a couple of months or something like that, to, to please provide that comments, provide those comments as well. So anyway, Barney.
I think your, your specific responses Irene are actually an example of the value of, of having committee input. We've heard from a couple of individuals tonight. But I think what you get out of a good committee meeting is the synthesis of that and the back and forth. And something emerges from that, which may at the end of the day be quite different than the initial views or input of any one person. And I think that's what we as council members find the most valuable. So I think specifically when concerns are raised that are general, we've heard them for months in respect, from, you know. People all across the county in respect to the, uh, attainable housing initiative, having to do with infrastructure and so on. It all eventually has to get down to specifics and really understand what particular points. But I think, I don't want, I think rather than going further down that issue or discussion, discussing all that tonight. I think the general point is that's what a committee conclave should be able to work through. And, and, and so, you know, and, and I would welcome the committee batting that issue back and forth as to, well, what exactly are the concerns? That really are most trenchant, that, and, and, and understandable, that need to be raised. And then that comes back to the council for our consideration.
Thank you. When is the next, um, L R P meeting? Is it next Thursday?
It's next Thursday, yeah, February 20.
Okay. So I have a conflict. Um. What time is that meeting?
It's normally seven.
I'm going to be downtown.
Um, well, we can talk offline about, um, I don't know if we would want to reschedule that. I, I do agree that, I mean, timing otherwise is good for members of the committee to, you know, have some input. But that timing, you know, that, that's also good for us in terms of, um. You know, getting some content for the testimony.
Would it be helpful if there was a meeting of a subcommittee? Or, I mean, if, if it's the whole committee, it's the whole committee. But if there's a, a, a subcommittee group. Specifically focused on this issue, if there was a meeting, because I'm, otherwise I'm, I'm, I'm available in the evenings. And I, I would be happy to have a, a meeting before the 20th, if that's helpful in that way, that on the 20th, it's, it's, uh. I don't know, just more productive.
Yeah, um, Ellen, if you're still on the line, um, maybe we could try to find a couple of dates, maybe before the 20th. And pull the committee to see who would be available to meet with Irene directly and Barney or anyone else on the council who would like to.
Well, we're limited, it just would be the two of us.
Okay. Oh, right. Cause you can't have a open meet. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, so if that's something that's, that would be, uh, um, helpful. I, otherwise it's just that one day next week, I'm completely unavailable. But I'm, otherwise any other evening, uh, I, or even tomorrow night, I, I can meet. And, uh, we can go through and start compiling a list. Rich?
Yeah, thanks. I, I, we've only got two weeks before we have to produce something, right? Is that the?
Yeah, I mean, if I, if I had something on the 20, by the 28th, I could turn around something by the, the, the fourth, you know what I mean?
And I, I want to go back to. What we want them to do. I think at this point in time, what we've, what, what we would go back with is not something that says we completely oppose this or whatever. But it's a, it would be a document that says, these concerns have been raised and what, what are the questions? Here are the questions that we feel need to be asked. And let's limit it to that. That's what, if you can do that within two weeks, that gives you. You know, something to write to the count, to. Yeah, to, to, to write. Because there, there is no, you know, that. They, they may completely discount the idea that, well, traffic studies need to be done or any of those kinds of things. But we at least need to ask the questions. So if, if the committee could come up with those kinds of concerns and questions. That this, that this legislation raises would be good.
Joy, Ellen, how, how does that sound to you? I, I want to make sure that this is. Making sure it's satisfactory to you both.
I think it sounds good. I think tomorrow night would be great Irene and Joy, if you're available, we could, we could call a meeting. Whoever's interested, whoever's available. I envision it as, um, an explanation from you. While, and, and, uh, what's exactly what you just said, attacking to us. And then if people have any questions about the tasking, they can ask you and Joy right then and there. And, um, we can give you up work, delegate things like that and be off and running. So that when we meet again in a week, then you wouldn't need to be there Irene, Joy would be there. And at that point, we could report back to the committee, as Barney said, synthesize. Put our heads together and then hopefully come up with some questions, um, or recommendations that we could then. Pass to you so that you have some time to, uh, consider them.
Okay, okay. Great. Yeah. So let me know, um, what time works best for you after four o'clock. I am free for the rest of the afternoon and evening. So feel free to let me know what works. Barney?
Yeah, I think my further comment is that I'm, I'm not a great fan of subcommittees of committees. The value of a committee is the fact that it really does attract views across the town of a lot of different people. And helps forge a synthesis and, and mutual understandings. And I'm a little concerned, especially on a volatile issue like this, that a subcommittee ends up being a faction. And then we inevitably hear from a faction, but not the complete view or other views. So I think on it, especially on an issue like this, I would encourage the commit, and I understand not everybody can meet on the drop of a hat for sure. So I get that. But I would encourage that as much as possible, the committee hang together. And, and as you said at the outset, Joy, they represent a wide variety of views. That's great. And I for one, in terms of taking the input from the committee, will feel a lot better in that. We have been better served as council members if we know that a variety of different views have been represented in the deliberations of the committee. Uh, which I'm not always sure would happen with the creation of a subcommittee. So just want to put that out there. Um, I agree with you, Rich, that questions are important. I, I think the, and, and correct me, Irene, this is just a first, this is, this is a public hearing for the Z T A, is that before it goes to committee?
Correct. Yeah, they're calling it a public hearing, but the intent is to then provide, uh. Ample time for the P H P committee, uh, to work through the issues. And that committee is Natalie, Fanny Gonzalez, Andrew Fritzen and Will Jawando.
Got it. Okay. I, I, I will offer. Got it. Okay. I I I will offer one general comment, which I say to, and I see there's several committee members here, but it's something which I've just been candid and reflecting my own personal views on this, which is you know, I think the town really has done a lot to help change the image of how we are perceived in the county over the last, you know, eight, nine years here. And because we have tried to be responsible, measured, and responsive to what issues that have come up. And we've made some real headway. And the the part of that is that when these issues come up, we really wrestle with them and try to see if there's a way we can go forward somehow. What I I feel that if we want to have any influence on this up in the ZTA, it's important for us to maintain that position, that view. And and so at the outset, I am not one who's in favor of just saying, no, we don't want to see any multifamily housing full stop. I think there needs to be some movement in that direction. I think there will be anyway. And the surest way for us to be thrown out and not our voice not counted is if we just said, no, we don't want any. And I think as a matter of principle as well, I feel that we should be willing to see some. So that's just my starting point. I don't know where I end up, and I don't have informed any view about this particular ZTA and whether it's excessive or what should be shaved back or whatever. But I go into it with a will, which is that some amount of development, additional density in down county is appropriate. There's a great demand for housing and not just to live in apartments. And that there should be some way to find a a a middle ground here that can work. I think this ZTA is radically different and far, actually radically, it's vastly reduced from what the planning board itself had proposed. So no one can say that the people who are proposing this CTA have not listened. They've come back with something that's a great deal more specific and less drastic. And I think we should accept that as a starting point of good faith, if you will, to see what could be done and work with on that basis. Doesn't mean we don't ask good questions. It doesn't mean we don't express concerns. It doesn't mean that we don't want more work done. It doesn't mean we won't have problems. But it does mean that we are trying to see what might work here and make some sense.
Thank you, Barney. Rich?
Yeah, I I agree with Barney. And one of the things that I I I think the committee would be useful for is we can ask questions that would lead to very different conclusions. So I mean, it's you don't have to, we don't have to skew our our questions to either be in favor of or opposed to it. We can just ask the questions. And I I hardly, we've we've had this discussion in the council before, and I think as as a council, we are not opposed to further housing in multifamily housing in in Chevy Chase, because we aren't, we don't want to be perceived and are not a a community that wants to exclude people from our town. So I I think it's important that we, you know, we have a perspective, which is at this point, ask the right, ask the question so that we can then form some opinion that may lead us to to suggest alternatives to what's being proposed.
Thank you, Rich. Stephanie?
I think that Barney made some really, really good points about how to arrive and, you know, and how and how the council already, the the committee process, notwithstanding or being what it is, have really tried to get a lot, a lot of input from town residents and from as many town residents as possible. Now, up until now, it's been in the context of the AHSI proposal. But I think a lot of the feedback that we got is certainly not irrelevant to what is what is before us now with the workforce CTA. I attended the large session on what was then the AHSI at BCC High School and you know, was really struck by the number of comments, obviously not just from within the town of Chevy Chase, although although we did have, I think, a fair number of folks there from the town, but from across the county, especially from down county, expressing real concern in terms of impact on infrastructure, not so much about sewers, certainly a bit about parking, but largely about schools. And so I I really do, now it is somewhat ironic for me to be the one raising this because my children did not attend public schools in Montgomery County, but I certainly have many, many friends and neighbors whose children have. And I do think that that is one of the questions that we really need to put on the table is what the impact of more dense housing in this immediate area would be on our schools where our kids, our neighbors' kids go go. Because, you know, I I certainly am constantly hearing stories about temporary school units, trailers, you know, we've we've been asked actually to contribute from time to time to helping with infrastructure like that. And I I do think that's something that the county really needs to address. At the same time, at least, if not before multifamily housing is is introduced to neighborhoods like ours. I I I really want to underscore what Barney said about how we are perceived in the county. I think that you know, our leadership over the last few years has really, really evolved and we are taken seriously. And we are considered to be collaborators and people to whom county leadership can look when they want real input and about the serious impacts of of what they're doing. And I honestly think that our strong advocacy on AHSI is part of what led to where we are now with a much, much, much scaled back proposal. I now, again, like having been to some of the public sessions, I think that the, you know, the large majority of the public supported something more scaled back, so I don't want to overstate our our role in it. But I think we have a lot more credibility than we did just a little while ago. And so I really wanna, I really want to emphasize the point that Barney made, that I think we need to stay the course in terms of both substance and tone.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you. Thank you all. Any other comments on on this topic? Okay.
Look forward to committee's thoughts.
Right, right. So Joy, please reach out when whenever there's a an understanding so that also that meeting can can be posted on the calendar as well. And and I will I will make my make sure that I'm there and and contributing. So thanks for that. Let's see. So make sure here. I have it covered, Ron, so we are we are good. Thank you. Have a good evening. Thanks, Ron. Great. The next item, a couple items actually out of the Public Services Committee, turn it over to Barney. Two, two things. One, there's the the Stanford Hill, and then the other was the permit parking data collection effort. So I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you. Dave and I, coming off of our last committee meeting, Dave and I have discussed and and pretty much agreed on a map of streets that would be looked at, basically 46th Street, and then one block back of the streets at a right angle to 46th Street, which I think Dave tell me if you have a different view, but we both agree is a fairly modest first, you know, number of cars to be counted. And what we'd be seeking is basically the following data that would have to be collected at different times, different occasions, so we get sampling. But basically, we'd record the cars parked, how many, how many cars are parked, how many empty spaces are there? So we have a sense of the degree to which parking is really filling the streets or not. Secondly, are the cars that are parked, do they have permits? If they have permits, are they permits issued by residents right on that block or an adjacent block? Or are they permits issued to residents who are much further away in town? And basically, collect that information. And then that would come to the committee and come back to the council and basically see to the degree to which we have an issue, which has been raised by some of the residents, particularly on 46 or or neighboring right angle to it like Elm, that residents who have permits from elsewhere in town are parking on that street and therefore preventing the residents right on 46th Street from being able to park near their homes. So this would be a way to get at it. And the idea is that by, you know, keeping it to a fairly modest number of blocks altogether, it wouldn't be an onerous job to collect the data. I'll turn it over to Dave if you want to add anything in terms of when this might be done or timing or anything else to.
That's the gist of it. We'd also sort of extended it over to West Avenue and the streets adjacent to the Ridge and Stanford and Walsh in that vicinity. We have put together the inventory of parking spots on those streets. So we're ready to get started as soon as I guess we get the go ahead from the council. Once we pin down the scope.
And and what what's your means of of executing this? We have to hire somebody or think town staff can take care of it?
No, we can take care of it. We sort of did a test run, and it's pretty easy just to go through and write down license plate numbers and permit parking sticker numbers and then
Then do the correlations.
Okay. Put those up. So it's pretty straightforward.
Any questions from my colleagues?
Yeah, I do. I just I think it would be helpful to get the number of parking spaces on the property as well. You know, just to get an idea of how many parking spaces are available along those stretches on the proper on the property per se. And again, then, you know, you could probably walk down and say, well, that you know, that driveway could take two cars and or that garage, you know, they got a two car garage, so it's two cars. But I I I think we need to have information about what's available on those people's property to to park. Just my own personal opinion.
Okay. I think we do know that because you might have space for two cars, doesn't mean you can always have two cars there because of how the family uses the lots and who has to move the cars. But I take your general point. That obviously is additional capacity that's expected to be used. So we ought to be taking that into account in our deliberations. That's that's fair. Okay, good. Thank you. So is there is there, do you need a consensus from the council to kick this off?
Well, I actually had a couple of questions, but I want to turn it over if Stephanie or Joy have anything. Okay, my I've had a conversation, Joy and I have had a conversation about this. I I since this is going to be a manual effort, what i- is it possible to, as a kind of back of envelope exercise, be able to determine that, you know, we have Todd said something to me about two months ago, maybe it was six weeks ago, when we went through the first storm, that there's 20 miles of sidewalks in the town. Think I was, I think that was right. Is that right, Dave? Is that 20 miles?
Something like that, yeah.
Something like that. So I'm I'm just wondering that can we figure out, okay, you have X number of miles of of parking capacity, like so a car, and I think it's like 15 feet, isn't that what Joe Cutro was saying, like you need to have 15 feet for a parking space or something like that? To be able to figure out if you have X number of miles of the the street, because some streets, I understand, are only one side of the street you can park on and not both. But let's kind of take that out of the equation for a second. You have so much parking capacity if you have 15 feet per car. And you can then go to the DMV and say, okay, how many cars do we have registered in that, you know, and addresses in the town to then figure out what the delta is? Would that, wouldn't that also be valuable information? I understand it doesn't address, you know, permits and if residents are parking in the in the right spots or whatever. But I still feel, and and I don't want to be a broken record, but I still feel that there is value in understanding today before anything is built that's going to be more than single family in the future. What on earth our parking capacity is today on these streets? So is is there, is there a way to do this where you're not out, you know, counting cars, but you're just figuring out that, you know, whatever, we have spaces for 4,000 cars and we already have 3,000 cars registered to addresses in the town? Wouldn't that be valuable to know?
Well, it gets bad, but you you can't leave off the equation about how much is available on the private property. You can't, you can't just say, hey, that we we, you know, we've only got there are this many cars in the town and this mu- much on the roads that can accommodate it. We have an accommodation on properties, so you need to factor that in. If we're going to ever make the argument that says we're, we don't have enough parking spaces if you put in tri duplexes or triplexes. You've got to have that total environment of parking availability. It can't be just what's on the streets. So I, yeah, so I I don't know. I I don't know if there's a back of the envelope calculation you can make off of the the plats that the town has of the of the lots. But that in combination with what you say, Irene, could give you a ballpark number of what, you know, what parking accommodations we have in the town.
I mean, the the amount of off-street parking is seems to me is a is a knowable number within, you know, 75%, right? I mean.
Sure. So is that? Go ahead, Barney, you were.
To me, they're too, it's a it's a fair and you know, thought, certainly anything that could be done that could be back of the envelope and especially, you know, if you're trying to get a handle on a situation where half the town, in half of the town that does not have permitted parking, you know, any kind of simple math would be would be fine. To me, they're just two very different approaches and issues. And and I guess what I'd like to do is at least let Dave go ahead and kick off the work for the first issue and get that done. And and but I agree, we should probably kick around and and see if there's some ways that we can do some some simple math on the on the question of how much parking capacity the town has. I agree with what what Rich said, we'd have to take into account places to park on the on the streets on the on the on the private property. The other thing which which occurs to me, and I say this as a prelude to the issue that I'm about to discuss regarding the hill, is that on streets like Ridgewood and Maple after Thornapples that goes down the hill, which are really single lane roads for many hours a day, it's you 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 could not possibly allow all the parking spaces to be filled because it would be impossible for cars to get past each other. There have to be breaks where people can pull to the side and 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 not force one car to back all the way up the hill or all the way down the hill. So we don't really have, you you can't, you can't fill the streets to the gunwales here under any circumstance. So there's both the addition of parking on private property and the acknowledgement that we get to full capacity long before you have filled every parking spot on a street. So as long as we sort of think through that, I think trying to find some simple way to proceed, which does not require people walking the streets, I'm all for it. I think that would be fine. Happy to get that. I I don't, I don't think frankly, the task is probably as urgent as we might have thought it would be if, in fact, what we have now is a ZTA that does not involve any interior multifamily housing, a multifamily housing in the interior of the town. And you made the excellent point, Irene, before that if it's going to be an east-west and on Connecticut, no one can park there anyway. So any parking is going to have to be onsite. But in any event, I think if you're just looking for background data, because who knows what's going to come down the pike, I think that's a good question. I think trying to handle it in some macro ways is a way to try to do it. So.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can just go ahead and say two spots onsite per household. You know, there's 1,036 lots, two cars per lot right now, roughly, you know, because some are one, some are four, you know.
And we might, we might say that the the street is full if we have to think
Correct.
Two thirds or three quarters of the lots are taken. You have to have some vacancies, otherwise people can't travel on the street.
That's right.
Right. And aren't there, aren't there, there are a small handful of houses with none, right?
Yes, there are some, but I think you would have to take.
But not very many.
Not very many. And 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 then the shared driveway situation. Yeah. So I, again, two cars per lot.
That seems.
You know, just kind of, yeah.
Assumption.
Safe assumption there. So it would, I'm I'm personally fine with proceeding with this um focused data collection effort that the Public Services Committee, but I I would like to, you know, seriously consider just what would that level of effort be in doing this back of envelope? You know, calculation so we can have just something just arranged to start with. Um, and maybe, I don't know, Joe Cuccio can help with something like that. Uh, to to keep us honest, uh, because we do have some streets that are already one side parking, not two. And then to the point where whatever the industry standard is that we can't, to to Barney's point, we can't get it to full capacity because it would be impossible to um traverse those roads if it if everyone was parking on the street. So. Okay, I, fine, personally, I don't know how others feel um about the the effort that um Public Services Committee would like to, well, it's really going to be Dave and.
Yes, at this point, we're turning it over to staff.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Which is the way a good committee system is supposed to work.
Congratulations, more work.
Let me talk quickly about just.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page about that effort. Yeah. Okay, good. Thank you. Sorry, go ahead, Barney.
Yeah, I just want to give a quick uh feedback. Uh, this is just for a way of information. There's no decision here. But the Public Services Committee had a very engaged conversation, meeting, uh inviting residents um uh to uh consider what needs to be done to improve the safety of the hill on Stanford between uh Oak uh Oak Ridge and and um uh and 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 east. By the way, when I said Oak Ridge, I meant Ridgewood. I I still get those two streets confused after all these years, which like, anyway, but um this is obviously a hill that has concerned residents for a long time. As liaison to the committee, I spent some time standing there during rush hour uh during some of the really frigid cold days, but I was noble and did it. And it was really pretty shocking, actually. I mean, the number of near collisions is just goes on and on and on. Fortunately, people generally abide by the speed limit, so no one actually hit each other. But I would say during a rush, the rush hour period I was there, there were four or five times that cars had to back up and come all the way back down the hill or do something. I mean, you're really counting on the kindness of strangers to ma- to make it over that hill and not get hit. Uh, so uh, when we had our meeting, the, there was a very general consensus expressed by strongly by residents of just how dangerous that was. Uh, and um, there were several options that Joe Cuccio set out for the committee to consider. Um, and the ones that that uh had the greatest traction were the ones that essentially widened the street on the south side by eliminating the median between the curb and the sidewalk. In other words, the street would be widened by that distance. Uh, and and that widening would permit parking to remain on the south side. There's no parking allowed on the north side, but parking to remain on the south side. And in addition, have two free lanes of traffic, one in each direction. So that would um greatly, you know, improve the safety and not have the, remove the risk of ru- of of head-to-head collisions. Having said that, uh residents felt strongly about two other things. One is that, maybe three other things. One is that they felt that that would actually uh lead to additional speeding. Uh, as because people, the traffic calming, you know, extent of the current unsafe situation would be removed. And so they would very much want uh speed bumps uh to be put in place uh if the fact the street is widened. Um, and then the other question is what happens with the trees that are on the south side? Uh, there are three trees in question that are in the median. There, uh, if if I number them one, two and three, going uh from um um Oak Ridge up and over the hill toward east. So one is the first tree you come to, then this two, second, third, third. The the second tree is a very small tree, and I don't think anybody particularly cares one way or the other. And one thought uh is to sort of scoop out, if you will, a widened street that would be what widened between the first tree and the third tree. And that would permit some cars to park. Um, but there would still be a couple of spots where these trees would be that would prevent the widening of the street right at those points. And but that would, that's that's one solution that would save the two relatively larger trees, offers still some parking and at least for that stretch, open up two free lanes. Then you sort of as a continuum could remove one or both of those larger trees. They're not huge hundred-year-old canopy trees, but they're nice trees. Uh, and and uh obviously, the more you you take out of those other two trees, then the more you open up the space, the wider the street is for a longer period of stretch up and over the hill. Um, for the, for the record, the two residents who live on the south side uh of the of of uh of um Stanford, right at the hill, uh, and those trees are in front of their property. Uh, each house has three small children. So to them, safety is absolutely paramount. Uh, and they would want the maximum degree of improvement in safety and generally feel therefore that they they do not worry about the removal of those of of all three of those trees, if that's what permits the greatest measure of safety. So that was the sense. The committee just heard that. The committee has not deliberated or come to any conclusion. But I thought that that was an interesting enough amount of input that I wanted just to relay it to my colleagues on the council just by way of information. So you're aware that this issue is cooking. Um, the one other issue that came up was that we had, we had put on the table the prospect that that one way to reduce the the congestion uh on the hill during rush hour uh would be to to permit people to turn left off of Bradley going uh eastbound in the evening. Turn allow them to turn left directly onto Maple rather than having to first, you know, turn on to east, then go up and over the hill and then continue on their trip through the town. And and there was a very, very broad and deep negative reaction to that idea from residents in all the neighboring streets. Um, uh, the uh, for the record, uh, the the traffic study, which the town did, indicated that traffic just about doubles during that uh peak period in the afternoon from around seventy or so or seventy-five cars to close to a hundred and fifty cars during during it per hour for each of those two hours. Uh, so uh, you know, it 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 obviously is the way we have currently set up traffic conditions clearly does exacerbate that. Rich, I recall when you were chair of the committee, you made the very sound observation that an awful lot of our traffic restrictions shut traffic around within the town without necessarily changing the total amount. Uh, but clearly the people in this part of the town felt strongly that that the current arrangement does deter an amount of of cut-through traffic, and so they'd be very reluctant to see it lifted. Uh, in any event, when uh we discussed it, um, I think the sense of all of us was, look, if let's, let's tackle the safety problem and the safety problem is not just a two-hour in the afternoon problem. So if we can solve it with a physical improvement twenty-four seven, that's a preferred solution. So uh, right now, I think the emphasis is on what can be done to physically improve uh the the uh street uh safety, uh but recognizing that uh if we were to widen it so that there could be both parking and two full lanes, uh that we also will be asked to consider speed bumps uh on that on that stretch. Anyway, no decision. I'm happy to listen to any comments you have or questions, but I just wanted, it was significant enough. I just wanted to inform everybody.
Thanks, Barney. Any any timeline for when the decision uh might be ready to present to?
It'll be, it'll be a couple of months because next month we're going to go back and talk further about things on Bradley. So I guess uh it will be the April committee meeting that will take up and potentially have some recommendations. So uh and the net of it is that it will probably be into the next council year that we really, you know, do something serious about it.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thanks for that update.
Sure.
Uh, so I I think so, uh, Joy, uh, agenda letter F is Long Range Planning Committee Scope for Multifamily Housing Impact Considerations. I think we kind of covered that with the workforce housing discussion. It kind of melded those two. Um, so I think we're okay with with proceeding.
Yep.
Um, the the and G is also, if you will, OBE or overtaken by events. So um just for those that are on the line, um, the Montgomery County Department of Transportation had communicated some changes to the ride-on bus route for thirty-four, Route thirty-four, and um it it wasn't clearly stated uh that the way it was in um the intent versus how it was communicated was that there were it's going to be an eli- elimination of Route thirty-four, which is not the case. Um, essentially what is happening is that there's going to be a shift as to pick up and drop off the coincide where the riders would have to change to other buses so they could get that to their destination. So there's a change to the route, but it it's still going to allow through um a transfer process to another bus, people to get to their destination. So we had received a couple of comments from uh residents, as well as there was a discussion on the listserv about this, but um new information came forth that um, for now, everything seems to be uh uh working where people will be able to get the to their destinations. There are specific things around friendship heights and the different medical buildings there. Um, so we are good there um to uh to to move forward. Um, under other business updates, Bethesda Market Park. Um, Barney, if you'd like to.
Sure. Um, well, the saga continues. The uh, I guess the good news is that the it uh I I feel like a broken record. I keep on telling you there's progress, but there's not a signing. So that's another, this is another, another month of the same. Um, I did get an update today from the Department of Transportation. Uh, the uh County Attorney's Office wanted the documents reformatted and changed a little bit, a few other observations, da-da-da-da-da. So that actually fell back to the Department of Transportation to make those adjustments. They've now made them and sending those comments and send that revised version back to the County Attorney's Office. When it comes out of that office, then it will go back over to the developers. So in any event, uh, the the general sense was that, yes, we're still making headway. Oh, they they got permission from the county risk officer for the deal. So that that's a check that had to be, that's a mark that had to be checked. Uh, so that's good. So in any event, they're getting closer, but it's not yet signed. So the net of it is that we're still probably, I would say we can't expect that the the real new renewed kickoff of design work, you know, will, I don't think, happen starting this month, but should happen starting in March. That would be my my projection. The other thing, though, that I think was very helpful and and is a testimony, I think, to the value of committee work that that uh we all acknowledged before. Um, the uh uh based off of initially a memo that arose out of the 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 Public Services Committee reviewing the traffic issues, all the holistic number of traffic issues and pedestrian safety issues that arise with this development of these parks uh and which uh I sent to the council and reviewed review, I guess, a couple of sessions ago. Um, I modified only very slightly to turn it into a format that could go out to external uh uh parties. But um, we had a, uh, you know, every other week, we have a meeting with the other parties and Irene and either Todd or Dave and I participated in it. And uh, we were asking for a general review of all these issues. And uh DOT scheduled that review just this past Wednesday. And uh, um, the memo that I had worked on went out in advance. Uh, and everybody had seen it. And very fortunately, the developer's traffic consultant, who are going to be doing all the traffic work associated with the site plan, uh, was also uh had read it and was there. And I think they had a very substantive discussion going through each of the different pieces and generally all taken very seriously. So just to hit the high points, um, absolutely have to be focused on improving pedestrian safety crossing Willow uh between the new park and over to the the Elm Street Park. Acknowledge recognition that because of that very much more, much more interesting and enjoyable new playground that's going to be built at the north end of Elm Street Park, it's crucial for families and kids to be able to walk safely and not be conjoined with the um, uh, with the with the Capitol Crescent Trail. Um, that obviously something has to be done with the Vermouth Bus. You can't have the bus there and people loading up, standing on the trail. Get that. Um, consideration on on the po- town parking spaces along Willow. Uh, there's, they both ca- can cause congestion, but also are traffic calming. We just want it on the table and asking the question, should we keep all those spaces, reduce the spaces? What should we do there? To both facilitate traffic, but still keep it calm in an area that really is crucial. Uh, moving uh the the develop, we we also hit up the issue that we talked about in council before that that if 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 ultimately it's deemed necessary to allow trucks to enter um in in to go down into the garage to drop things off for the park, for the for the market from Willow Street, that it's crucial that that be very limited to only certain hours that will not conflict with the main hours when when pedestrians will want to use the war enough to go back and forth between the market and the park. Um, and moving over to Leland, um, uh, there was strong support uh for um um, uh, the signalization of Wisconsin uh going southbound at that point, so there could be a safe left-hand turn and lifting the four to six restriction. Uh, there was some feeling that we would be difficult to get three lanes going uh westbound on Leland at Wisconsin, but two for sure, make it clearly marked. Uh, and also strong support for narrowing uh Leland. Uh, and where currently there are a few town parking spaces, narrowing it back up toward um uh Forty-Sixth Street to reduce the the distance that people be traveling going between the two parks. And strong support for uh the idea that there should be only one unified crosswalk closer to Forty-Sixth Street uh for people going between the parks as well as people walking along Forty-Sixth Street. So, you know, I think we felt, and I think Irene tell me if you have a a different view, but I think you're in agreement that they people took all these issues that we had raised very seriously, are really grappling with them and 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 recognize how they all relate to each other. Uh, you know, we really want people to come into that garage on Leland and use the entrance off Willow as little as possible. You have to think about how you encourage people to do that. Uh, so people got it. So anyway, it was a good discussion and I felt really engaged and and uh people really working as partners, which is a good feeling.
Absolutely. Um, sometimes in these projects, people want to just wear a a hat. You know, I'm just a developer. I'm just a county. I'm just a whatever. And um, it's an excellent example of the different issues that came up and uh thinking holistically about the project. I I'm not sure. I think that would have been the, one of the earlier opportunities um for that, now that that project's becoming more and more real. So thanks for your good work on that and thanks to the committee. Um, great. Any questions at all for Barney? Okay.
Whatever it's signed, I will let you know.
Oh, goodness, we're, we need to bring in a huge cake when that thing is signed.
And all that does, all that sign, all that signing means is that that people are going to start working again seriously on the uh
That's it, yeah.
And by the way, the one other thing to go to that, which which goes to the committee process, when when the, whenever the design work for the park starts up again, uh, I think at least my view would be, and I ask colleagues consideration of this, that we basically pulled together both the Land Use Committee and the Long Range Planning Committee. It's kind of a joint committee to get engaged in reviewing those the plans for the park as they get finalized. And again, it means for us to reach out and get a broad measure of input from different residents uh to uh get their their, now, you know, to get their views about the the final the final issues that have to be resolved about the the lawn, the stage, the in the shade feature, the number of trees and the lighting. And there are a lot of a lot of things that are going to get into the details. And I think the kind of having those both committees be available to um, reflect back what we learned, get their ideas and feed it back into the process will be very helpful.
Absolutely, absolutely. Great. Um, the next item is the technical amendment to the state law. So um good news there. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, it is, uh, it was unanimously approved um by the Montgomery County delegation uh and is now in the House. Uh, for those who might be following, um, because there's a website where you can follow all the state legislation as they go through their very uh, yeah, what can we say, ninety days of frenetic um pace uh to get through as many uh bills as they can. This is HB one-one-six-seven, HB one-one-six-seven. Um, it's already had its first reading in the House, uh, and it's now uh referred to the Transportation and Environment Committee. Um, the Transportation and Environment Committee is headed up by Delegate Corman, uh, who is a um a representative in Montgomery County to a few of our um Glen Echo and Somerset. He he represents the those municipalities. Uh, we have kept in lockstep uh with Delegate Corman, making sure he's fully aware of these issues. He is in support of this amendment and is chair of the Transportation and Environment Committee. Um, he's working those traps through. Um, what is, the crossover date is meaning to be passed over. Meaning to be passed over, because that's to go through a second reading, a third reading, and then go over to the opposite chamber. There is no date set aside for the second reading, um but I uh I would, I'm. I'm assuming um the way that this is going through, that it'll it'll hit the crossover date, which basically means. Um for those unfamiliar, it has to cross, it has to be passed by the House to then go to the um Senate, and then it goes through its set of readings. So uh once it gets close, then I'm gonna um go ahead and start uh re. Uh engaging the senators uh who have co-sponsored this legislation uh to uh to to get it. To get it through as well. Um so we will see what happens. More more coming as we uh. Make our way through the the session.
Great work.
Well, let's see what happens with it. Um any questions on that at all? Good comments. Um a couple more items, because one, it's a late edition. Uh the we are coming up, if you can believe it, to towards the end of our town council session. Um for everyone on the line, uh in March, uh the town council uh deliberates. On next year's, next fiscal year's budget. Uh we've already re-received a few requests for consideration. Um for this year, for this next year's budget, uh which we'll be discussing. Um but if there are ideas that residents have for uh different initiatives, uh you know, that that. That necessitate a a pretty sizable budget, uh let us know. Uh but all those discussions will occur during the month of March. And uh that will be noted in the in the forecast as well. And then another uh item is uh town council election. So the election will be held on May sixth, and um anyone where there's been a couple of uh messages already. Uh if if there's interest in running for town council, but maybe you have some questions um about it, you're not sure it's for you. Um please reach out to any one of us, uh and and we're very happy to answer your questions about. Level of effort, type issues, um you know, all all things in between. Uh and the nominating petitions, which uh forms are available online, but all this information will also be included in the March forecast. Uh are due April fifteenth. Uh and it's it's rather simple form. Um but uh we do hope that you uh consider um running for town council. Um so I just wanted to make a mention of that. Uh the last item is about the Corso Construction Management Agreement, unless everybody has other things as well. Um I'm just asking Dave for a uh couple of minutes summary on the discussions thus far. And uh again, I sent out uh a a document to you that just gives you kind of high-level. Topics that are being covered in the Construction Management Agreement. And the intent is to basically finalize this in March, um and during our mu- ma- March Town Council Meeting. Will then figure out um if everything's complete and also figure out who's gonna sign off on this. Um so uh likely it's uh it's it's Todd, Dave, and maybe myself. But we just wanna get all that figured out tied up by by March so that they can turn in their uh. Permits for demolition and get get all started. So anyway, turn it over to you, Dave.
Um so I guess everybody's seen, I guess Corso has sort of provided an outline of their expected construction timeline. Um they're planning to start the mitigation work to remove the asbestos and some of the hazardous materials on the site in the existing buildings. Um probably in the next two weeks or so, um and that doesn't have much of a footprint. Um so you know, there won't be really a change that the residents notice, but as part of that work. Um Corso has hired a construction management company to, you know, help facilitate the permitting process. And you know, oversee the actual general contractors once the construction starts. So they've reached out and they've prepared a draft construction management agreement that I've been going through and. Immediately I told them I met with uh them and uh Corso's arborist on Monday on the site, just to look at. Tree protection conflicts that, you know, we might have or additional trees that we are requiring to be protected. Um you know, they provided a traffic management plan, you know, we've had discussions about, you know. Parking being limited to the site itself. Um making sure they don't, you know, use internal town streets to access the site. Um so we've just been sort of having general discussions with them. Um just to make sure that we understand the phasing and how the construction is planned to work and make sure that. Everything that we've been promised and things that we've required through our our review process are met. Um so the sort of an iterative discussion now. Um I know they're anxious to make sure that there aren't any surprises later on. Um so they're sort of pushing to get everything from the town in place as far as, you know, understanding what they need to get their permits. Like I said, they would like to have this construction management agreement executed um per the binding elements, just so. When they're ready to start construction, there aren't any holdups. Um so. Um I guess where we're at is, you know, we've we have a pretty good understanding about it. Um I'll take what they've provided, um supplement it with what, you know, our discussions have been. Um probably float it to the council once Todd's back, just to make sure that the council is satisfied that we have an agree, good agreement. And then, you know, we can reach out to them and actually get it in place and then make it a condition of our demolition and building permits that we'll issue. Um they've also agreed to come before the council, um at the April council meeting. Um to give the town an update on, you know. Hopefully they have a better idea about the timing and they'll have just a Q and A for residents to, you know. Find out more about the project and sort of what the actual impacts of it, the construction will be. Um so that's basically where we're at.
Any question? Oh, Rich, please.
Yeah, thanks. Um Dave, the only thing I want, in reading through it, under the the last paragraph of the. Tree protection measures during construction, the very last paragraph, it says. Calls for regular inspection of trees will continue for five years post-construction. If necessary, an arborist will prescribe any inter-interventions. Um I hope that, I mean, I I would hope that's the town arborist.
Yeah, so some of those trees will be are subject to approval by Park and Planting's forester. As part of their s- forest conservation plan.
Right.
Um so mitigation trees that are subject to park and planning. Authority, you know, the park and planning arborist. Could have say, but we certainly would participate in any process.
I I would just, I I, because they do, the Corso's got an arborist. I don't want them approving the interventions, you know, it needs to be, it needs to either be you, you know, the our town arborist. Or Park and Planting's arborist.
Yeah, yeah, I think I think that was a, was, yeah, I think we just wanted to make sure that, I guess it was clear that it could be Park and Planting, not just.
Well, I would make it clear that it's not the, yeah. Good.
Thanks, Rich. Anything else that stuck out for you right now?
No, good.
Right. Um that is all that was on the agenda. Was there anything else that folks wanted to bring up? And we are ending early, which is. Woo. Um one thing I will just bring up now uh as an FYI. Uh the Climate and Environment Committee, which I'm a liaison to, is presently developing a resident survey. On uh habits, um and and the survey is very, very specific about um. Things that that the, through a town policy could help. Um as it relates to sustainability and things like that. So there's like the tree, are they aware of the tree programs? Um you know, stuff like that, stuff that we're some some cases already doing and other things that what would, what level of incent incentives. Um would be needed for you to think about other programs out there. Um it's a survey. Uh it, I'm just giving you a heads up about it. People are are still um putting it into Survey Monkey. And uh at a later date, I don't know if it will be March or April, uh we'll discuss that further as to. Uh you know, any other additional input that the town council would have and uh what sort of other. Information we can get out of it. So that's all that I have. Anybody else have any other items? Well, thank you for your time. Thanks. Thank you all, the residents, for for staying on the line um this entire time. Uh feel free to reach out if you, if any questions come up uh as a result of tonight's discussions. I'm always available. And I look forward to talking with you all again soon. Have a great night.
Sorry.
Take care. Good night.
Good night.